Board, as we do, we'll move on to item three two. If there's a member that would certify closed session for me.
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, sorry, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion on the agenda? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Move on to our announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We start this evening by honoring you, the representatives of the school board during February, which is School Board Appreciation Month. Virginia School Boards Association theme for celebration this year, Rising to the Challenge, reflects the leadership of the local school board members as they serve their local school divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. The work of our school board members, you, impacts our school division and community today, but your legacy carries on to benefit students, staff, and the community in years to come. Beyond twice monthly meetings, you volunteer your time and are present at countless school and community activities. We appreciate your leadership in setting the direction for WJCC schools and working collaboratively to bring that vision to life for our over 11,000 students and 1,800 staff members and our broader community. On behalf of every employee and students at WJCC schools, thank you, school board members, for your exemplary service. We really appreciate you. February is also Career and Technical Education Month, or CTE Month. We're going to share a short, a brief video this evening with you about what CTE looks like in our middle school classrooms.
The WJCC Middle School CTE program provides students with opportunities to explore and discover a wide variety of industries, careers, and interests through engaging classroom experiences. With valuable hands-on activities, students test theories, fuel interest, and develop skills for now and in the future. From communication and project management to exploring Mars, students learn problem-solving in today's world. With more choices than ever, middle school students gain an expanded understanding of science, engineering, technology, and math. They are ready to launch their creation and futures with confidence. CTE is a great place to explore, discover, and create.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Dr. Herron, any reports from board members this evening? Ms. Young?
Right, on January 24th, I attended New Horizons Board Meeting, and there was an audit report similar to what we had received earlier this year. They also talked about gets, because I don't want to get into that. And there was a comparison of revenue to budget. There is going to be a slight change in some fees. But the most exciting part of that meeting is that the New Horizons is working with the Navy to expand a couple of their buildings to provide access for more students to attend. And I think one of the programs they talked about was welding, if I'm right. And which, whenever I've been out there and I've seen the welding program, I've never wanted to weld, but they make it look fun. So I was really excited about that, and I hope that everything works out so that that does happen.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any other reports this evening? Ms. Donner?
Mrs. Hunley and I were able to attend the Student Advisory Committee with Dr. Herron last week, and it was just wonderful to be with those high school students. We had a really eye-opening conversation around why students are missing school, particularly at the high school level. And so I think some of their insights made a lot of the adults in the room go, hmm, didn't think about that. And so I'm excited to see what the Dr. Herron and the rest of the administration does as they think through ways to encourage our students to come to school.
Wonderful. Yeah.
Also, it was exciting. They, we had them try to think of a slogan that would be catchy. And one slogan was "Attend to Ascend." And I, my brain started thinking, I'm not technologically savvy, but I thought about, wouldn't it be cute if the kids could make their own avatar and entering their building? And then as they, they are there every day, it rises to ascend to graduation and be, and all the different things they could, like military, two-year college, four-year college, entrepreneurship. And then they put on their cap and gown, and their attendance pops up and they ascend into. So I'm sure somebody in the tech field can work that out. But I think kids would like to see, see how, you know, how they're doing. And if they're not in school, that little avatar doesn't move. So that's just my quirky brain.
That's, that's cute.
So if anyone steals that idea, everybody heard that was my idea before you patented.
Thank you both for your participation in that, in that committee. It is a, it's a fun but incredibly valuable committee to hear from our students on the ground level, what they need to be successful. And I, I'm curious, may I ask, was the question asked of the students, or did they bring that to the committee?
That was a question that was asked of the students as we've been, you know, as we've sent out the information around attendance. And it was really interesting, the neck, the connection between our, our tardy policy and how that either disincentivizes students to actually show up to school. And so just thinking about punishments versus rewards and positive reinforcement versus punishments.
Thank you. Any other reports from the board this evening? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our public comment. I don't know if we have any speakers that have joined us today. If not, we'll move on to our proposed agenda items for the evening. Item six one, which is review for requests for proposal nine dash two zero two three dash, no, no, dash zero seven five seven, architectural services for design of two preschool centers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Mr. Snipes and Mr. Kiefer are going to present information on this item this evening, which we've been looking forward to coming before the board.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. This evening, we, we bring to you a placeholder agenda item for the design services related to the two preschool centers that we have been discussing for some time. The RFP went out on January 3rd and closed on February 1st. The next stages of that process would include a review and scoring of proposals, potential second-round interviews with requisite firms, and then administration will bring back to the board for consideration a potential winner for that particular contract. Our, our goal is to replicate the design for both of the sites to the greatest extent possible. And we have previously shared with the board and the community that our initial thinking is that the best placement for those two centers would be on the grounds at Norwich Elementary and on the grounds at Clara Birdbaker. Happy to answer any questions. The full RFP was provided in board docs for you, should you have questions.
Could you remind us the number of students that we hope to serve?
Two hundred and fifty-two per site.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Kiefer or Mr. Snipes we have here as well? I think we're, Ms. Aller, okay, I think we're all just itching to get this moving and be able to approve something that comes to us at a later meeting.
We'll bring it back to you as soon as we're ready.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Item six two, review invitation for bid two zero two three zero seven three five War Hill High School interior renovations. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to introduce this item this evening. It's one of our CIP items.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Herron. Tonight's proposed agenda item for your consideration is a review of IFB number two zero two three zero seven three five, which is the War Hill High School interior renovation. As Dr. Herron just mentioned, this was approved in the FY twenty-two CIP in the amount of $1,620,000. And after design fees, we have remaining $1,560,795 to begin construction. The IFB went out on January 3rd and was due back on February the 2nd. But at the time this item was presented, this item was written, the, the results had not been received as of yet. But you will receive those at your next meeting and will be able to award at that time if you choose to. The scope of work for the project will include selective demolition, resilient flooring replacement, carpet removal and replacement, and interior painting. It will be a very big job. As you know, War Hill High School is our largest high school. So it's be a lot of demo, and we are planning to get that done over one summer. That's the plan right now.
One summer. Ms. Hummel?
This is not a, a big question, but just when I'm looking through the RFP and I see things in metric versus, I guess, English, is it, do we typically just go one way or the other with?
That would be a question I could not answer. That's probably something that our purchasing.
All of the, you know, like, it looks like the English system is in red and the metric system is in green all over the place.
It's probably something that our purchasing department has a template for because we deal these so often, but I will find out for you.
No big deal.
Any other questions or comments? I just, in fact, you answered my question, which was the duration, you know, what kind of impact would it have on learning? And so done over the summer, minimal.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we plan to have it done over one summer. We've done schools in one summer before, high schools in one summer. Jamestown did take us two, but that was planned as a phase, phase two, because it was two floors. We phased it in with different type of flooring, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Looking forward to seeing the work, getting in that school after the summer. All right. Item six three, review purchase requests for laptops for staff and student use.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landers is going to present this this evening. Annually, we bring to the board a part of our refresh cycle, and this is one of those annual items, Mr. Landers.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration of and approval at the next meeting of purchasing replacement laptops for staff and student use in support of our ongoing technology refresh cycle. The purchase request will provide 1,100 laptops for high school student use, 150 Chromebooks for elementary student use, 325 laptops for high school teacher use, and 56 laptops for administrative staff use. The purchase does include the extended warranty and services for a total purchase price of $1,177,326. The purchase will be made using the TIPS contract with Lenovo. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Ms. Hummel.
So I'm seeing how this, I'm looking at the policies because I'm trying to be more mindful of policies and this, all these purchases are under policy DJ and DJR. That when we talk about laptops being given one, we've got a one-to-one ratio, right, with laptops to students. Does that then, the laptop itself become part of our policy of educational support under materials? Like, we're using, we're using the laptops for our instruction. So it's just a question about, like, where, it doesn't just fall under purchasing. It kind of falls under instructional support as well.
Not sure where the actual physical items fall. Ms. Ewing may be able to answer that, but I know we do have an acceptable use policy for the use of the laptops, which will come back to the board every couple of years.
Because I, the reason I'm bringing it up is that we've got, we've got some, some parents who are, you know, talking about textbooks. And they're like, I, I don't have a textbook in my class anymore. And I'm like, okay, but you've got a laptop to support virtually maybe the fact that there's, we're, we don't have a textbook. So I just, it just was.
If I may, perhaps it isn't the laptop itself that is the instructional material, but rather the content that the laptop enables the student and the teacher to be able to use. For instance, we do have digital textbooks that definitely are instructional material, educational material. The laptop is simply a notebook, a piece of paper, allowing that material to be consumed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, this is sort of a follow-up. I understand the instructional value, but we're also talking about software. And, and, and I consider that to be instructional material as well as textbooks. Where do those come in? Where, where does the software come into our budgeting process?
Most of that is contained within the Instructional Technology Department budget, CAU Center 505.
And then we.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, and, and when we are approving the software, is that approving it as a DJ purchasing? Or does it also the policy of instructional materials? Does it, do we cross-reference that?
Well, it would cross-reference because any purchase would fall under our purchasing policy. And we have to abide by those processes regardless of what we're purchasing. But then it would further fall under instructional materials since that software, that online program, whatever it may be, may be an instructional resource.
And we have a very explicit process for the vetting of all digital software. And we take input, it goes through a process, there's a committee. And if we want to add a digital resource, it goes through that committee that exists every single year.
And that just would fall under the materials portion, is that right, of the regulation?
Probably content, yeah.
Under content.
Yeah.
Ms. Ordigo, and then Ms. Young.
Well, some, some curriculars in some subjects, the textbook comes with a digital accompaniment, right? So you purchase the textbook set and it comes with the.
Correct.
And then do we also have some that, that are instructional materials that are only digital that never come as textbooks?
We do, yes.
But it goes through the same review process as textbook.
Yes, we, we have a standing instructional review committee that's made up of content coordinators, teachers, folks from our Instructional Technology Department, and they meet two or three times throughout the year.
That's for digital materials, digital resources.
Ms. Young?
Right. Can you just remind me what TIPS stands for?
No.
Oh, my question, too. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but that's one question I did not anticipate. It is a, it's a national clearinghouse of government contracting. Ms. Ewing, can you help me out at all here?
Sorry, I don't know what it stands for either, but yes, it is.
We'll look it up and get it for you.
Once I get back to my laptop at my table, I will find out for you.
We'll provide that for you.
I just get confused sometimes with the acronyms.
Yeah, I had the same question about what, what does TIPS mean, but then a step further. I know these are large purchases, but are they purchased through a local vendor, or is it?
We are actually contracted directly with the manufacturer, Lenovo, to, to purchase these.
Gotcha. Thank you. Ms. Young?
What happens if we don't purchase these?
We will have some very out-of-date laptops that may not be able to run the most current software, that would become maintenance burdens over the next year, trying to find replacement parts for old, old equipment.
And I believe once they go out of a certain number of years, they're out of warranty as well.
Yes, they would fall off warranty.
A computer was to break, we wouldn't have a replacement right away from the company.
So was it five years? Is that how many years?
We actually, we're on a three-year cycle, and we're now on a four-year cycle. We actually increased the cycle time to four, two or three years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And now we've got, literally, we've, we've got the budget to keep that four, four-year cycle with replacements in, in working order.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Donner, then Dr. Beers?
TIPS, the, the inter-local purchasing system. That's what it is. The inter-local purchasing system. So it allows K through 12 charter schools, private schools, daycares, universities, blah, 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 to go through, basically, it's a national clearinghouse where you can apply to be on the TIPS national contract, and you can purchase things. So it's free for people to sign up for as membership, and then you can access, I guess, contracts there.
Excellent. Thank you. And Dr. Beers?
Actually, this is sort of a follow-up. The phrase, the requested purchase amount. And I know with, in, in technology, sometimes we lease and sometimes we purchase. Do we use those terms interchangeably? Are we actually buying 1,100 laptops or are we leasing?
We are actually buying.
We're actually, when do we, what, I guess, because I've, you know, I've, I've asked, not exactly the same. What, when do you decide to purchase and when do you decide to lease?
We've evaluated the lease option several times over the past four, five, six years. And it really doesn't save you anything and can actually wind up costing the division because when you enter into a lease, all the vendor's doing is taking that purchase price and dividing it by three or dividing it by four, depending on if you're entering into a three- or four-year lease. So you're not actually saving anything on the cost of the device, you're just spreading that payment out. And we actually lose some tax benefits from the ownership of that device and being able to take off the loss from the depreciation value of that device.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, so should, should we assume or understand then that every four years, all the laptops are replaced?
Yes, ma'am.
Because if we're purchasing 1,631 now, that, you would think that would be a quarter of all the laptops, but that's a lot less, a lot fewer than.
We, I will be bringing another purchase in a couple of months to buy a few more. Our work group is currently wrapping up some of their work on the remaining devices. But we should be replacing between 17 and 2,000 devices every year.
Okay. Is there a reason for the?
For the difference?
Yeah.
It just, it goes with our student enrollment, how many students we have. Like, this year, we had to buy a few more because last year, we didn't have quite as many students. So it depends on our student enrollment, how many staff members we have.
Okay, it just, it seems low, the number seems low, if it's essentially a quarter of all staff and students.
Yeah, this, this purchase is a little bit low. And I will be bringing another purchase probably in the April timeframe to buy a few more.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your, your insight here, your guidance. All right, item six four, review budget transfer request. Dr. Herron?
Mr. Chair, this evening, Ms. Ewing is going to present this item that is connected with our student attendance and moving money from student attendance and health in the amount of $200,000. Ms. Ewing, you want to give us the information, please?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For your consideration this evening is a request to transfer funds from instructional salaries and benefits to contracted services within the student attendance and health function. The division has a substantial number of speech therapist vacancies that we have contracted with five different vendors to provide services to our students this school year. Funds from vacant positions within the functional area have supported the contracts to date, but additional funds are needed to finish the school year. There's also a vacancy for an occupational therapist that is being covered by one vendor. The anticipated cost to finish out this school year is $200,000. Funds are available within instructional salaries and benefits. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Any questions for Ms. Ewing? Ms. Hummel?
It's not just a, a question, but just a statement. All these therapists are usually required services that we, we have to provide for our, our children, usually as part of IEPs and things like that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is just a clear, yes, of course. We have to do it. So anyway, just wanted to clarify that for anyone listening.
Thank you for that, Ms. Hummel. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Ms. Ordigo?
I want to thank you for the answer to this question that's in front of us. I had asked, you know, with benefits added in, can we see a comparison between a hired staff versus a contract? Because contractors don't tend to pay benefits to it. So you've provided the explanation for, I guess it looks like it's the difference of $65 an hour versus 82.
Yes, ma'am. When I looked at the current staff that we have and added all the benefits, the average hourly cost for our staff is about $65 an hour. And we're currently, the average cost we're paying these vendors is $82 an hour. Thank you. You're welcome.
As Ms. Hummel alluded to earlier or shared, it's a, we're kind of a no-brainer. This is a requirement on our part, and until we're able to bring in enough faculty and staff to support that requirement, we've got to go outside. So that's what we're doing here. Yeah. So thank you for, again, the information that you provided, and yeah, we'll look to take this up at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Item seven one, moving on to our discussion, item seven one, WJCC Schools Foundation Annual Status Report. I want to turn this over to Ms. Hummel.
Just, we're just checking if Ms. Pulley is here or not.
Looks like she is. Looks like she is.
Well, hello, everyone. I would like to introduce Mrs. Penny Pulley, who's going to come in here and give us our annual report from the WJCC Schools Foundation. I'm the school board member that has the pleasure of serving on the WJCC Schools Foundation. And I just love to be a part of it and to hear all the positive support that we receive every year from the foundation. So I will turn it over to you.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. First of all, I just want to remind you that this board that I sit on, the Schools Foundation Board, is, was created in 2014 by this board, by your board. So we are a fundraising arm designed to help the school division with some things that you're going to hear a little bit more about now. So I am the board chair, and our board is made up of interested parents, grandparents, community leaders, business, former business people. But they're all working in partnership with you and the WJCC Public Schools to provide resources to educators and students for innovative, inspiring programs. Okay, so to date, the Schools Foundation has exceeded $300,000 in financial contributions to the WJCC Public Schools. The signature project of the Schools Foundation is called Innovative Learning Grants. And they have been awarded over these years to every grade and every school in the school division. The Schools Foundation recently expanded its mission beyond just the grants to include sponsorship of other things like the annual Teacher of the Year Awards. The Schools Foundation gave over $6,000 to be distributed as monetary recognition to the teachers who received the 2022 Teachers of the Year Awards. But also, it included, because of Dr. Herron's insight, and I think appropriately, to the rookie teachers. Because, you know, as we know, teacher retention is primary around here. So we are also pleased to sponsor the upcoming 2023 Teacher of the Year Awards this coming May. Also, in January, the Schools Foundation contributed. Um, also, in January, the Schools Foundation contributed ten thousand dollars to the Teacher Store, which is soon to be opened. I'm sure you're all aware of it. Um, and the Schools Foundation will continue to serve as a conduit for individuals and corporations wishing to contribute to it. Uh, there are other in, initiatives on the horizon too, all of them to help achieve the goals of the school division, to retain great teachers, to encourage classroom innovation, and to inspire students to achieve more. Thank you very much. Any, anything I can add for you?
Any comments? Yeah, Ms. Uh, Young.
All right. Uh, can you just explain a little bit more about the school store?
The school store, well, I, um, just a contributor to it, but, um, I think that Dr. Heron is probably much better to explain that.
Yeah, we've actually set up with, uh, donations, a, a teacher tour, store for teacher supplies. It's a digital store, but we do have all of the supply, supplies bought. And teachers can go online and order up to a certain amount of teacher supplies each year. And we deliver them to the schools as a way to say thank you to our teachers. Again, we, we want to keep our teachers. We love our teachers. And this is just another simple way to say thank you. So it's really just got launched in, in the last week. We've started deliveries. And, uh, each teacher has a, up to a certain number of dollars per year. They can order all at once or over three or four times. And we actually went out to teachers and asked, what would you like to have in the store? And we bought the items based on their requests. And so there's a lot of buzz and excitement in our schools in the last few days with having these packages arrive. And the foundation has been our primary sponsor to launch this initiative. Thank you very much indeed, Ms. Pulley.
And thank you, and we're proud to do it.
Any other comments or questions from Ms. Pulley while we have her?
Is?
Yes.
Is it premature to talk about anything with the summer school situation?
Still a work in, in the works. Um, yes, we'll be able to maybe talk about it at a, at a later meeting.
You just have innovative ideas always coming.
Always coming, yes. And that was what I was referring to when it was other initiatives. Because I, I don't know that it's developed to the point where we have anything, from our standpoint anyway, to report.
It is a fun group to be with. So if anyone out there is watching going, oh, I would like to, you know, perhaps contribute to this organization or volunteer to work with this organization. It's something that we would, we would welcome your, your involvement.
Right. And if I might echo that, just to say that if, if you're out there and you're watching this because you're interested in public school education, this is one way as a parent or a community person, just any person in the community could help us, help the school division through the foundation. There are not a million ways to volunteer, but this is definitely one.
Ms. Ortega?
How, how would one contribute financially if they wanted to? Is there a website or is there a link or?
Thank you for asking that question. We have a website. Uh, it's called WJCC Schools Foundation. Nothing else, just no, uh, spaces, just a whole bunch of letters. WJCSchoolsfoundation.org. And you can go on there and click and contribute.
Thank you. Is there any, any link to that on our website?
There's a link to the Schools Foundation, yes. On, that's right. You could go on the school website and up in the top section, as I recall, you'll see a link to the WJCC Schools Foundation, which would be very simple. And I'd love to hear from you if you're out there.
Well, I want to say we appreciate all the work that you and your board do. Um, Ms. Hummel hit it right on the head. I, I've been on this board, this is my fourth year, and it seems like every single year, there's a new novel initiative that you guys dream up somehow, some way, and then put it to action. And so it's been really cool to see you guys work. And it has been about the schools, it's been about teachers and students and, and you're exactly right, staff retention is a primary focus of this board's work this year, as it will continue to be in subsequent years. And we're just really grateful to have you guys as partners. So thank you so much for your work.
Well, thank you for your.
Please take that back to your board.
I will take that back to the board and report it. And thank you for your work. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pulley.
Okay. Y'all have a great evening.
You too.
All right. Move on to item seven, two, our school start time discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever is going to lead the conversation this evening. If you remember, we brought some information to the board in October and then subsequently did a survey with, with families. And we're going to, Mr. Keever is going to take us through that and make some comments on it this evening. And Ms. Wall was supposed to help this evening, but unfortunately, she's, she's ill and not able to be here. So Mr. Keever gets to do it all.
Thank you, Dr. Heron.
He's more than capable.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. This evening, want to provide the board with some additional information relative to school, uh, tier times and start times. By way of review, uh, last year, we conditioned or convened a study with TransFinder to look at our transportation routes and efficiencies. There were some specific shifts that TransFinder recommended that we consider as an organization to provide an even stronger transportation scenario than we currently do. Some of those items we were able to put into play. Uh, for instance, we moved the distance of some bus stops, uh, a little bit further from people's homes. Uh, we attempted to the best of our ability to, um, cluster students at particular stops. So we ended some stops. We also looked at non-transportation zones. Many of you might recall that from the spring, uh, in moving into this particular school year. By way of example, uh, last year, school year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, our afternoon on-time arrival hovered in the seventy percent range. Uh, and that's something that we worked hard to get to last year, the seventy percent range. This year, our afternoon on-time arrival is in the ninety percent range. Uh, part of that is related to our continued work around efficiencies. It also is related to the additional time that we place between the bells, which was another recommendation from TransFinder. Uh, we, we feel good about the things that we have done with respect to TransFinder, but know that we can always improve. Another piece that we touched on were the financial implications related to our, our current, um, personnel situations. We spend, um, just under, we have a contract for just over a million dollars with ever-driven to be able to transport students in individual or small group scenarios. Uh, the TransFinder study reported that if we were to consider a shift in tier times and we're able to bring that to fruition, we might save on, uh, the number of sixteen to seventeen bus drivers. Uh, that number equates to approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars with respect to the financial piece there. Also, we've shared with the board and the community research on adolescent sleep and start times and the importance of providing school schedules that better align with, uh, sleep patterns for adolescent students. We received an initial feedback from our community via initial feedback form. We presented that information to the board in November. Uh, and the board asked for an additional survey of the community. You may recall that we provided to the board and to the community by way of the survey, two particular potential tier structuring times where elementary would lead the day, beginning at seven twenty-five, and middle school or high school would end the day, beginning at nine thirty. As a part of that discussion, there was also perhaps a concern about starting too early at the elementary level. So we provided a second option as a potential consideration point for the community with elementaries beginning at seven forty and middle school or high school concluding the day at nine forty-five. That information was shared with the community as we went out for an additional survey. So tonight, what I want to do with you is to review the data from that survey, the survey window, some of that kind of information. We have data available by staff response, family response, and student response. And then finally, we'll conclude the presentation this evening with a recommendation from administration and open it up to questions from the board. As a reminder, on the survey, it was emailed to all staff, parents, and current sixth through eleventh grade students with an open window to respond to the survey between November eighteenth and December fourth. The initial email went out on November eighteenth. We sent a reminder email to those folks who had not opened the first email or had not submitted a response on November twenty-eighth. And we did a final reminder email to those that had not opened that, the survey opportunity on December the second. We didn't feel like we should, uh, send a, a fourth reminder. We felt like three probably got us to where we needed to be. Three thousand eight hundred and seven responses total, um, two hundred, twenty-four hundred or so from the family room, about a thousand staff members, and four hundred and forty-seven students. Just wanted to set that in context for you with respect to other participation rates with opportunities that we've been given to our community to provide us some feedback. You can see that it's a little bit higher than some of the other feedback opportunities that we've provided. Here's how that feedback breaks down based on designation by the participant of the survey. At the, at the family level, fourteen seventy elementary, eight forty-seven middle, and nine forty-three high. As a reminder, family respondents could select multiple affiliations. So if you try to add up the totals, fourteen seventy-eight, forty-seven, and nine forty-three, you will not get twenty-four fourteen. So don't spend time doing that. Uh, yeah, pencils down. At the staff level, uh, elementary, middle, and high, again, if you, if you serve multiple buildings, we ask you to pick the predominant building that you served in. And then the other would encapsulate those members of our team that work in central office or transportation. And then the student indication, uh, was from sixth grade to eleventh grade.
That one does add up though, right?
Yes. Yes. One of, one of the pieces that we wanted our, um, our folks to weigh in on was those factors that they felt like were preferred in developing and looking at student schedules. And we asked the question to, to rank those out, from students' health and sleep to academic performance, before and after care for students' families, before and after care for staff families, the adult work schedule. And in this case, it meant either, uh, the parent's schedule or the staff member's schedule. And then child's work, extracurriculars, family responsibilities. If you see an NA, it means that that category was not available for that group to respond to. And it, it was pleasing, I think, in looking at the data, for us to see that, that health and sleep and academic performance were some of the strongest, uh, features in the preferred schedule component.
So one is high and six is low?
One is high and six is low. Yes, sir. We also asked for recognizing the two options that I just shared with you, with a seven twenty-five elementary start or a seven forty elementary start, again, in that first tier grouping, which option folks would prefer. And you, you can see here that on the family side, most preferred, fifty-six percent or so, preferred the second option, which was a little bit later start. On the staff and student side, fifty-six to fifty-eight percent preferred the earlier start. There was some question as we began this process in late spring and even into the fall about the implementation year. It was pretty clear to administration that based on the board discussion in November, that we weren't necessarily in a position to bring forward a, a recommended change for twenty-three, twenty-four, but we did feel like we should ask that question. And from our perspective, a little surprisingly, fifty percent of the, the families that responded felt like their preferred implementation year was next year. Uh, whereas only forty-nine percent felt like it was in twenty-four, twenty-five. This was one of the data points that was a little bit surprising to us. We, we felt like, and I, and I still administratively would recommend, the longer on-ramp to prepare is the better way to approach, uh, a change of this magnitude. But the data would suggest that folks were seemingly comfortable making that change for next year. In this particular data set, uh, we asked families to list their preferred start time pattern, where the level listed as one would start first in the morning and level listed three would start last. To orient you to this visual, the columns from left to right are elementary school, then middle school, then high school. The light blue bottom section of the bar represents, uh, what they, what that group selected to go first. Purple middle section represents, um, the, the next starting group and then the third preference. So when you look in this particular group for families, you will note fairly predominantly that families felt like middle school ought to be in the middle. And then there was a, a, a split in thinking between who should lead the day and who should close the day. Not overly conclusive in this particular view, other than the middle school group being in the middle. Here is the preferred tier order for staff. Again, the, the most predominant number is in the middle with middle school potentially being in the middle section. Uh, the elementary forty-two, forty-one in the first, and then high school forty-six or twenty-seven i- in the first. So it, it, again, there was no glaring data to us that suggested a preferred order necessarily, other than that middle in the middle. And then from the students' perspective, not surprisingly, uh, the, the students that responded to this, again, just to reacquaint you, it's grade six through eleven, felt like middle ought to be in the middle. And then there was this sense of, um, you know, elementary school probably being first and maybe high school being third, but that's not overly pronounced there. We do appreciate the additional data and it, it does provide us a, a number of different things to think about and to consider. But having looked through the data and really given careful thought to our capacity as an organization for a shift of this magnitude, administratively, we're recommending that we not shift tier times to twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, and that seemed to align with the initial board feedback in November. Uh, we do feel like it's important to continue to monitor the related factors to a shift of this magnitude. Uh, for instance, our transportation needs and our ability to continue to hire drivers and to continue to do an even better job of being efficient and utilizing the capacity that's available. There are also some scenarios with respect to, uh, the pre-K space being built and the idea of the possibility of a tenth elementary school and the rezoning components that might be associated with, uh, building a new pre-K space or spaces and how we would best accommodate that. So as, as we continue to move forward with several of those other potential changes to the organization, we want to continue to monitor the start time piece, uh, but take it off the table for twenty-three, twenty-four. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to engage in, in questions and answers or, or discussion.
So it sounded like the recommendation was to continue the discussion and the evaluation of that possibility, but not in twenty-three, twenty-four?
That would be our recommendation.
Okay. Any, uh, Ms. Donner and then Ms. Hummel?
Thank you, uh, for that. When I was looking at the October fourth presentation and the slide that does the comparison between our school operating hours and those of neighboring divisions. And so it looked like we were an outlier from the high school perspective of, we start almost fifty minutes earlier than the, I guess Fairfax, well Fairfax and theirs, but that was the one that started the earliest. Um, and so just curious around, as we think about that being an outlier and every, it seems most other divisions have moved to a slightly later start time for our high school students. And so there's the input of the community, but then there's also all the factors around high school students and need for sleep and things like that. How do we kind of weigh community input, staff input, and then some of the science around it?
That's a, that's a delicate question. Uh, I, I think that part of the reason that we, we brought this forward initially was I, around the idea of potential, um, cost savings that the division could incur with respect to our transportation scenario. Because we, we do feel like if we made the shift, we would have the ability to wean ourselves from the ever-driven contract, which right now is partially being funded through grant funds that sunset in twenty-four. So that was part of it. The other part of it was just the, the research and science behind adolescent sleep pattern. So it was a, a dual purpose. Some communities that have addressed this have addressed it solely based on the academic research around the, the sleep science. And some that have addressed it have addressed it only based on the cost savings. So, so we were trying to look at it from both angles. I, I will say, with respect to other school divisions near us, like school divisions, our current hours are not necessarily outliers. Uh, you know, Chesapeake has a later start at the, at the secondary level. Um, but a school division, uh, right on the eastern part of the state has a particularly early start for high schools and a particularly late start for middle school. So there's a, there's disprints across Southampton roads. However, um, I think the divisions that have attempted to tackle this have looked at it as a multi-year process. And if you, if you look at Fairfax, Fairfax was a ten or- And if you if you look at Fairfax, Fairfax was a ten or twelve-year process to get from seven twenty to eight o'clock. Uh, and they felt like that was a significant win. It was it, it was Fairfax experienced a a fair amount of financial uh, challenge to get there as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, this is really just a a comment more than a question. I I find it interesting to look at the factors and preferred schedule on the chart with the numbers across the board because I feel just anecdotally like what we always heard for not wanting this switch was athletics and extracurriculars or before, you know, after care for students or families that rely on high school students coming home or, and those are the bottom. That's just interesting to me that that's, that those weren't actually the reasons that the schedules were preferred, which doesn't line up with what we hear. I'm not saying it's not correct. I'm just saying that's that's good to know. So.
Think if you reach out to a broad uh, group of parents, not every child is affected. And so those who are most affected are most likely to be the most vocal for their children if it does impact extracurricular activities. That could be a factor, but yes, I think that was surprising to us as well.
It was, and I uh, I will say that the open-ended survey that we provided in, I think that was October, would give you sense that it was childcare that ought to be the driver. But when given a a a more closed-ended opportunity to respond to what's most important, that didn't raise, that didn't rise to the level.
Yeah, cuz you you would almost think it would be disproportionately the opposite because the people who would be most affected by not being able to do extracurriculars or have childcare would be the most motivated to fill out this survey. And and even even that doesn't seem to bear.
A lot of the outcomes were not conclusive in terms of where to move and when to move.
Ms. Huntley?
So my takeaway, thanks for doing this cuz I had the same reaction. I was like, hmm, okay. And then in looking at everything, we seem to be split like fifty-fifty, a whole lot on either either way we go. So my question would be, you guys have recommended that we do not do this in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. But we, as a board, the last time we talked, were saying the same thing. Let's not do it in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four and give a two-year advance notice. I'm not getting that recommendation. Is that still our recommendation that we hold off on this for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four? But we are looking at doing it in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
I think we're holding and monitoring because of the other major changes that are likely going to hit our school division at the same time, like redistricting for the early childhood centers. So we're looking at the amount of change that we want to bring into the organization that's disruptive at the same time so that we don't overwhelm our families and staff. So if we end up in redistricting, that's a major shift for elementary in particular. And every school will will face some some level of redistricting. So bringing everything, major changes, this is a major change. And so if that is coming about in the same year, that's why we really need to take a step back and decide what what becomes our priority as a school division.
Ms. Huntley?
Yes, I also um, was shocked when I saw uh, the low numbers. And it makes me worry. I hope the people that do need the childcare um, took time to do the survey because that sometimes happens, even like when we adopt a calendar and then when it's put out, then all of a sudden, all these people say, well, why did we change to that? Well, we sent a survey and this is what we voted on. So I I um, I just feel a little hoping that the people that really did need the childcare did fill the survey out. Cuz I was shocked as well with the results.
And I think that at the end of the day, just one thing get done or it doesn't get done, we can hang our hat on the fact that we did our due diligence in reaching out to the community. We were transparent about the facts that we had at the moment. And uh, so I, from my point, and I think I'm hearing this from the board, really appreciative that you guys were willing and and just got out there and asked the question again to a broader audience and took the time to make sure that the information came back and that it could be vetted reliably. So thank you. Ms. Donner and then Ms. Ms. Young?
So for, and since I'm the new school board member and I don't uh, remember this answer, what is this cost savings that we were looking at by making that change? And what would be the impact for us not to do nothing?
We we've tried to put a couple dollar figures and 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 encapsulate that to the best of our ability. We 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 generally have open bus driver positions. Uh, we can't can't fill them all. Part of how we are funding our contract with ever-driven right now is based on savings from those positions that that we can't fill, that are in the budget and utilization of uh, the ESER grant that expires. I think it's in September of twenty-four. Our contract with ever-driven is for approximately one point two million. Last year, we came in just over a million. We think this year we're gonna be less than a million, but there's still a fair amount of time left to go. If we were able to to recoup six, if we were able to to utilize uh, our own drivers for those students that we're transporting with ever-driven now and not have to hire additional drivers in order to get that accomplished, the savings might be somewhere in the neighborhood of about four hundred and eighty to five hundred thousand. But that it it that gets to be utilizing a term that I think we use on the calendar, a little squishy. Because there there are challenges associated with quantifying one-to-one in in terms of the more drivers we have, the better we are in terms of efficiency and our ability to move students across our school division. We're doing pretty well now, but it'd be better to have more. The other piece that as we bring the budget forward this year, we know we need to plan for a certain number of dollars to go into the operating budget for contracted driving services. So we'll bring forward a number, we I think we've shared it in early January, somewhere close to a quarter of a million dollars into the operating budget to help us with that contracted piece. So to do nothing, we don't necessarily anticipate right now a a cost cliff. I think that's the best way for me to be able to answer that.
And and I think what I'm, and that's really helpful. And what I'm missing is why does having the elementary schools go first help us save money?
You need fewer drivers because so the the way we start our routes now, our our s- our high schools have the largest attendance zones and the most ground to cover. Uh, and we use almost every single one of our contracted drivers for our high school routes and even into our middle school routes. We divide the drivers up across elementary routes. So sometimes it's half the group doing the elementary tiers. And so we we feel like if you move elementary first, you're talking about shorter, more contiguous pickups and drop-offs that then allows for more people to be used later in the day, whereas right now, we're using most of our folks at the front end.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
And just to clarify that.
I'm sorry. I skipped over Ms. Young and then Ms. Ortega. Ms. Young?
Well, I I hate to throw a wrench in the the works, but we we know that things are coming down in two years. I mean, uh, the position that I've heard is that we need to continue to monitor because of related factors, the impact of the new preschool and other transportation needs. It almost seems like we should be going ahead and just doing this, the tier starts this year because then it would be established for our families. And then as redistricting happened, it wouldn't, I mean, those continued monitoring related factors, I think, would become less important because there'd be already have some things established in place for our families. So I'm, I guess, I'm I'm looking at that. Those changes, those related factors aren't going to be an issue next year. And maybe that's the year to go ahead and do the the tier, the new tier start times because that, the the numbers on that were kind of, you know, there wasn't a real, uh, actually, it seemed like there was a few, just a slight bit more that we're willing to go ahead and start it this year. And then as the the next year comes along and we know that there's going to be some changes needed to be made, those tier starts wouldn't be a factor in anything because it already be established. So that's the way I'm looking at it. And I'm thinking that maybe we should move the tier starts this year because our families are ready, at least a good portion of them are ready to go ahead and do it. And then it wouldn't be an issue in further discussion when those other factors come into play. So that's that's the way I'm looking at it. And uh.
Wh- when do we believe construction will be complete? We're moving students into those wings?
Well, uh, our first order of business is to bring the board a design RFP. And the design process is probably a about a year before we get to the point where we can start talking about a construction RFP.
We're thinking twenty-five, twenty-six?
Feels optimistic.
Yeah. Ms. Ortega and then Dr. Beers?
Now I'm on a completely different track. So so, okay, then a different question. So we're we're saying we're putting this off now because of the potential for redistricting, but now the redistricting might be after twenty-five, twenty-six?
I think basically the general concern would be the time, there's only a six-month lead time for families to prepare. So to push it for next year is a heavy lift for for staff and for families, not impossible. But certainly I can see both perspectives.
And the reason I asked about, uh, did I cut you off, Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, just a little bit. Um, they, then back to the contract. Is that is that being paid for by ESER money that's going to go?
Partially.
And these are co- just contracted people or contracted vehicles as well?
These, this is for people to drive students and they're not our vehicles.
So we're not just having a contractor driver drive our school buses? It's it's?
No, 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 this is, and it's not a bus. It's a car. It's a, it's a, the ever-driven is it's a car. It's a a smaller vehicle.
Okay. How many, how many kids are going to school that way?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of forty, forty-two. On a daily basis.
Are these kids with disabilities or special needs or?
Some students with disabilities, some students that are homeless, McKinney-Vento students.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of what.
Sometimes, as as an example, and one of the things that we we talked about previously was that we as a division would utilize a bus, a driver and an aide to drive a student to Richmond for a specialized program. That bus was basically taken out of service for the day as w- as were the driver and the aide. We are able to use contracted services to recoup that driver, that aide and that bus to be able to use for a larger number of students by paying a premium to have someone else transport that student, as an example.
So if it goes, if it sunsets and this goes away, we're gonna be short of?
We, we're trying to plan for within the operating budget, some number of contracted services that we're able to utilize ever-driven to to be able to move students. There are some cases where we feel like it's a better use of resources to move students not in a school bus.
And so we've already added two hundred and fifty thousand in the operating budget for next year.
Right. And so in if we switch the times so that we would no longer need ever-driven, are there students, based on their personal situation, that would still need special transportation?
We 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 do feel like m- moving forward, we will need some modicum of contracted services to best utilize our drivers, our aides and our buses to maximize capacity. So that that, I think what we've learned through the last two years is that that it actually works better for some young people to be able to get to and from school in this particular way. Not at the the same financial level that we've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Young? Did did you, okay, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, I I'm gonna put a lot of emphasis on the location of the ones and twos uh, in terms of factors and preferred uh, schedule. And and I think the other thing i- is, I feel we're so close to getting this. We were v- pretty close to this twelve, fourteen years ago and then it faded. And what I don't wanna see, um, I don't want that to, you know, I don't want that to happen again. I think the time is right. I agree with Mrs. Young that um, um, that whichever schedule uh, we pick, and I actually prefer the second one myself, but um, uh, I I do think at times, like, I also think that um, we don't have to wait until redistricting. I think what what, I I think what I've come to realize being on the board, and I think a lot of parents have come to realize it and teachers as well, is education is change. You, we may wanna keep things the same or we have to do this this year and gosh, two years from now, we're gonna have to redistrict. And four years from now, we're gonna have another elementary school. That is what it is. And I I I I worry about seeing this slip with 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 uh, and even so, only four thousand respond. I don't know there are tens of thousands of other people. And usually what that means is, hey, I don't care whatever you guys wanna do, but I don't know if that's true or not. But I just uh, um, I would, you know, I think I would like to, I would like it to start in the fall. Um, and when those other things come along, we have a year, try it out, see what happens. And um, if we need to adjust it because some of other other things are coming along, then we do it. We change. We have to do that. I don't think you have to, but you know, it's, I I I I don't think it's necessary to wait until there's this one time when all, you know, three or two or three of these things happen, have to happen. And I, I, I don't, I I don't think, I don't think that's a
Before I
It's good and well.
Before I go back to Ms. Donner, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Maybe I can take crack at this cuz I'm just sketching it out. We're currently in twenty-two, twenty-three. We're, the recommendation is a layoff in twenty-three, twenty-four. Perhaps, perhaps beginning or or doing the adjusted start times in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's a year ahead of, to Ms. Young's point, a year ahead of the potential for new buildings to be available to move into in twenty-five, twenty-six. And I think we would do redistricting. If that was to take place, we'd do redistricting in twenty-five. So I I it makes sense what Ms. Young's saying. And I think it works with what the division's recommending, given the six months, we were just too close to the fall. I think we're all saying the same thing. Ms. Huntley?
Yes, I have one additional question. Did we sit down and talk with before and after-school care? And work that out before, and parents knew that on the survey because if they're not ready, we're gonna be in trouble.
We we, I have had meetings with our our colleagues at REC Connect. I am aware of the numbers of students who and families who take advantage of before and after-care at the WISC. That model of before and after-care is also up for some discussion at the county level with respect to how uh, the service is provided. Uh, I don't think it's a secret that the county went out for a request for proposal on potentially a third-party vendor to provide before and after-school care. So there are a number of moving parts with respect to care. I will tell you that both REC Connect and uh, the potential vendors are aware that the school division is considering and looking at a change in tier time status. So that that will not come as a surprise to whomever provides care.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Donner? Ms. Donner first.
Thank you. That was, that was my question, I think, is being good partners to a broader community to make a switch like this within the, with the six-month timeframe where you have other partners or who, there's there's REC Connect, but there's other places that people send their children after school. And so giving them a year and a half to be able to plan for how they would change their staffing to be able to accommodate, you know, students coming earlier, I think is better from a community partnership perspective if we were to delay that to twenty-four, twenty-five. I think my other concern is that I'm not seeing a mandate here to move the high school times. Because when I'm looking at the tiered, the preferred tier order from a family perspective, a staff perspective and a student perspective, there's still, right, forty-six percent are still asking to be in that first tier and that seven twenty start time or seven forty start time. And, you know, whether it's the second or third, particularly in the high school, it's not, it's not, there isn't a strong mandate on those. And then on the elementary school side. And then on the elementary school side, there's, y- you know, it's still hovering, it's kind of, they could go either way, early or late. And so I think if we're thinking from a long, from a perspective of what makes the most sense, I don't think we've got a clear mandate here to. To move a start time based on at least what the feedback is from students, staff and families. I think if there's other reasons that are driving that, then yes, you could, it could make sense and people are sort of open to it. But I don't feel like there's a strong mandate for twenty-three, twenty-four and I'm in agreement with the chair and others that twenty-four, twenty-five would be the soonest I would do it if we made that change.
Yeah, I think what you've pointed out, Mrs. Donner, is, is so always in the data, there's no clear preference from our community for any aspect, family, staff. A lot of the data is coming right down the middle, so we could look at it and say it really doesn't help our decision overall. Elementary, elementary's ready to go first. But high school also wants to stay first. And, and so there's no clear, i- it's not helping the decision, I think. You know, if we were to make a decision, it's based on the research on school start times. And that we would go back to that to drive a decision of the board. And if we are to make that decision, we prob- you know, we're talking about lead time of a, a year and a half. We really do need it because as Mr. Keever said, Rec and Connect is, is in flux. We don't know what's happening there. And it may disadvantage a lot of families to make that change right now for next year. But if the board does want to make a change, we probably need a decision of the board. To make that happen and announce that and communicate that to give staff and families and everybody time to get ready. Because it is a major shift in thinking. Um, we certainly support the research. Um, in terms of student start times, because we brought the discussion to the board in the first place. Um, but we're, we're concerned because we have a divided community over what that should look like.
Before we go around the horn again, um, I appreciate, Dr. Heron, that you are including the board in this. It is an administrative decision. I've heard the word recommended. It is an administrative decision. We, we've covered that, uh, in our work last year. Um, but if the board were going to offer you anything, I think it would be a resolution saying that we support this decision of the administration to. Um, adjust the tier times. Um, Ms. Ortega? When, when that needs to be, needs to take place, Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, I think the, I think one of the issues right here is if we're saying it's too, it's too soon to do twenty-three, twenty-four, cause you need a longer lead time. But we're not being asked to recommend the longer lead time start. We're not sure where it's going because if, if we're going to do it in twenty-four, twenty-five, we would have expected a recommendation to start it then. Otherwise, it sounds like this is just not gonna happen. I think we just don't know. Because we, we, we would need to do it now, right? This would be the time to let people know, but that's not being recommended.
I think our. I think our initial recommendation based on the data that came back was to not make the change for twenty-three, twenty-four in accordance with our previous discussion in October and November. I think that it, when we, when we first came forward in the early fall. Around this topic, we were prepared to potentially start in twenty-three, twenty-four as the discussion wore on. As we got the initial round of community feedback and decided to go back out for another survey. I think at that point, we administratively, I feel like we missed the window to open to, to go twenty-three, twenty-four. Because I, because of the necessary lead time that I think you need to provide for families. We, we, I, I, I think we have the option. To look at something in the next several, in the next couple of months, if so inclined. To move towards twenty-four, twenty-five, if, if that's where the board is leaning and administratively, we feel like we can help, help make that happen.
That's where I thought we were. I mean, I, I thought that was the, the big discussion that we had before. Was that we were going to reach out to the community, get more information. And then determine whether we, we actually give the advance notice to start this in twenty-twenty-four. And so that, I think, is my confusion and it was really going on with, you know, starting before Labor Day, you know, giving people at least a year and a half. You know, giving people advance notice. So I think that's where my confusion does, since it is an administrative decision. What is the school administration's recommendation for this? Is it, let's move ahead, it's gonna save money, the science supports it, let's move ahead with twenty-twenty-four? Or is the administration saying, eh, eh, you know, let's, let's just waste?
Well, we really wanted to hear the discussion of the board tonight because you really wanted some input from families and the input is not conclusive.
So then it goes back to, with inconclusive data from, from the survey. What is your recommendation to us as a board with the science and the budget? You know, like, what is your recommendation?
Yes, I think the question is, from the board's perspective, do you wanna scrap this or do you wanna give us a date of when we're going to do this? Or when it will be done, I should put it that way. Yeah, Dr. Beers and then Ms. Young.
Uh, two things. Um, none of you were probably here and even remember this. There was a time when, uh, uh, young families, um, had kindergarten, half-day kindergarten. And everybody worked after schedule, had to take care of the kids, all that stuff. And then without much of a notice at all, it went to four, it went to four, a four-day kindergarten. So then they had to make, you know, and we did, did. Uh, and, and, um, and I think the other thing I'd like to point out, um, you, you know, parents are pretty. A, a lot of parents are quite flexible when it comes to this sort of thing. But the other thing I would like to remind the board. Um, is another year, we're gonna have a different, totally different board. And that board may not wanna do this.
Correct.
And I think it's so important. I, that I don't even ca- I don't care if we don't start for twenty-five, but I want this board to go on record. As, yes, we're gonna do this and we're gonna start now. They can still change that, I know that, I know that, but.
But there'll be something in place, there would be something in place for a future board, say. Right, Ms. Young?
I mean, I think that's, that's where I'm at. I'm, first of all, this isn't the first time to, I mean, we have recently. We have some new board members, but this isn't the first time that this has come before this board. I mean, um, recently, during my tenure, we have this has come before the board. And then again, that just, as Dr. Beers, I just kinda slid off into the sunset after numerous discussions. I don't want this division, and I feel like it's part of my responsibility as a school board member. Uh, knowing that what we know about sleep studies for, for teenagers, to, to continue to have this discussion, why? We know that older, that our high school students need more sleep. Having been the mother of a high school student, trying to get him up at six, six o'clock to go to school. That's, that's the worst nightmare that a parent can have. Um, I want us to make a decision. And then have, then have Dr. Heron and her staff go with it and with our approval, saying, okay, if it's not twenty-three, twenty-four. Which I have stated, I'm very happy, I'm, I'm happy with and I think, uh, the community would, would fall in place. But if it's twenty-four, twenty-five, I want it to be known that on twenty-four, twenty-five, opening day of school, those tiers are going to change. That is what I want. I don't wanna hear about continued, uh, continue to monitor related factors. I don't think those factors. They will, they will happen no matter what. There's always gonna be factors. I want that tier time to be kind of put in stone and I want Dr. Heron to know that she's got the board behind her.
So my recommendation, based on the conversation I've heard, is that this board, um. Develop a resolution to provide support to Dr. Heron and her staff to, um. Implement a shift in start time in the year twenty-four, twenty-five. To the tier degree or the, the tier phase that they believe is suitable based on the relevant information we received from the community. And from the sleep studies and every other factor that you've already considered. Can we do that as a board?
Are we voting on that right now?
We're not. I'm asking as there's. Dr. Heron's recommendation, as I've heard it, was not to begin at twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think we still recommend based on the, the research that it's a good thing for students ultimately, and that was where our discussion started. We've had input from families, it's not conclusive. Staff at different levels want different things. A lot of people don't want change, especially staff and some parents as well. Um, but the research is still there, but certainly this is a major change and the board, uh, will get some, uh, feedback. Regarding the change and if the board does want to move forward, I think it would be very important to have a resolution that everyone can support and make it public.
So Ms. Ortega, to your question, though, we're not vote, voting on that today, we will develop a resolution, we would see that resolution and then we will vote on the resolution. Can we do that, looking at everybody's face? I- is that amenable? Okay, thank you. All right, that's what we'll, we'll get to you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll, uh, we'll ask, uh, Ms. Allar to, uh, communicate with our board attorney and craft some language around what we'd like to see. Thank you, Ms. Allar. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven-three, middle school bell schedule focus group update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to provide you an update on a process that is a discussion that's been going on for over a year now regarding the middle school bell schedule. And, uh, Ms. Walter and Dr. Worley are going to tag team and present us the information. They've worked for over a year with a, a large committee. They've involved every middle school teacher in the school division to get to this point tonight and this is another, uh, change that is under consideration.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. This evening, I'm joined by our Director of School Counseling and College and Career Readiness, Ms. Jessica Walter. To share an update on collaborative work of our middle school focus group over the spring of twenty-twenty-two and the fall of twenty-twenty-two. Our principals were key players in championing this work and in the collaboration, and we actually have Dr. Ellison here tonight as we present. A summary of our work. As we transitioned back to in-person learning in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. Five days per week on a regular bell schedule, we listened and we heard the voices of our middle school teachers. Collaborative planning time and increased planning time was a consistent request. We formed a middle school focus group with representative, representatives from all four middle schools and central office. And the team explored different bell schedules and strategies to support middle school teaching and learning. To include innovative options and incorporated flexibility while allowing sufficient time for collaboration, planning and learning. And we established priorities to serve as the foundation for any schedule and look for ways to enhance student achievement. Support student needs, increase student choice and provide teachers avenues to effectively plan and collaborate with each other.
The focus group included teachers, principals and administrators, content coordinators and other central office support. Teachers included represented every middle school and every content area, including electives and special education.
A highlighted timeline includes beginning our focus work in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. And, and we made an immediate intervention after there are spring work. Um, we made adjustments to our current bell schedule to support increased teacher planning for our current school year. We extended our schedule research and work through this year, the fall of twenty-twenty-two. And the team took time to explore several versions of a block schedule for middle school. Uh, and our teacher committee members partnered with school principals to provide updates to each school faculty. And finally, we pushed out a brief survey that allowed every middle school staff member an opportunity to provide direct input.
Through the work of the variety perspectives of the committee, we were able to complete a thorough review of current structures, needs. And evaluation of potential changes and supports for the future. This work included establishing priorities for a WJCC middle school schedule that align with our strategic plan. Facilitate student growth and success and enhance teacher capacity to support all students. Next, the committee reviewed several block schedule options and spent time analyzing pros and cons of our current schedule, which is a traditional daily six-block schedule. And potential block schedules. As mentioned previously, we also gathered additional input from all middle school staff through a survey. Included in our work was a cost analysis process with central office leaders to review staffing implications for multiple schedule structures. As an additional part of our process, we worked through key questions. What do we believe about middle school schedules? What are our key considerations? What are our priorities for middle school scheduling? What are our non-negotiables and what are our nice-to-haves? These questions help to identify our why and to lay the foundation for our time together.
Based on feedback over the past few years and the work of our focus group, we identified key considerations to keep at the heart of our work. As we build schedules, we will always, to the greatest extent possible, prioritize common planning time in our master schedule. Reva- review equity and teacher loads to reduce teacher preps and, and needed, as needed and monitor our class sizes. And we wanna support the needs of the whole child. This could include, but is not limited to intervention or remediation of content. Enrichment activities and enco- and encouraging connections with school. Our group research showed the block schedule enhances these opportunities and flexibility for teachers and for students. And therefore, our fall work included a review of several block schedule possibilities. And finally, we heard that we do need a little more time to effectively plan before implementing a potential transition to block classes. As we wrapped up the analysis of the spring focus group work, most focus group members saw the benefits of considering a block schedule. However, the group felt we needed more time to get extended input and plan professional learning for teachers. To support teaching in a block and to make appropriate adjustments to pacing and curriculum. Although we elected to continue our research, we heard the voices of our teachers and we took small steps to immediately support their needs. We started our current school year with the following changes. First, we made a change in the school day. The student day moved to six hours and forty minutes, giving teachers ten more minutes of open time in the contracted day. This addition gave teachers a chunk of time at the end of the school day for collaboration, planning and learning. To the greatest extent possible, our school principals and schedule teams across the division made common planning a priority within each schedule. And we added two additional art teachers to the overall middle school FTE bucket. This addition allowed all four middle schools to have access to two full-time art teachers, which directly supported, um, student request history and it also minimized class size.
In our work this fall, we thoroughly reviewed schedule options and provided samples on what different schedule models could look like for both students and teachers. Sample schedules were, were created in both the traditional schedule model and the A-B block schedule model. Activities, evaluation structures and discussions were held around both style schedules and implications to consider. Outcomes from these sessions repeated the importance of flexibility within the selected schedule option and considerations for academic and transition supports for students. Feedback throughout the process regarding the current WJCC middle school schedule highlighted some components that were positive considerations. This feedback included that there was a level of comfort with the current schedule and not having a change to the structure could be a positive to consider. Additionally, the focus group highlighted the positives of having most electives every other day and each core content class daily. Highlights and considerations for A-B block schedules were also thoroughly discussed with the focus group. Positives that came from this work include increased daily planning time for teachers. From approximately fifty-five to sixty minutes to approximately eighty to ninety minutes every day. Opportunities to increase student choice and flexibility in scheduling and increasing enrichment and remediation opportunities during the school day were also highlighted.
During the fall of twenty-twenty-two, every principal pushed out a brief survey after providing the final focus group update in a faculty meeting. This online survey gave middle school staff members the opportunity to provide input on the work of this committee. And input on the traditional versus block bell schedule. We had a total of two hundred and two responses with representation from every school and all content areas. Some important factors to note about the survey, there were a total of ten questions, three just collecting simple demographic information. With the remaining getting input on our current schedule, block schedules, priorities for any schedule. And the timing of a potential transition to a different schedule. We also had a few open-ended questions allowing staff to share benefits and needs for the transition. The survey did not require staff to answer every question. Therefore, in the next few data slides, you will see an N representing the number responding to that specific question. This slide outlines data that asks staff to reflect on the current middle school bell schedule. Staff responded to questions above using a Likert scale. The first statement, the current bell schedule allows me to provide high-quality instruction to all of my students within the day. Received the following responses, a hundred and twenty-eight. within the day," received the following responses. A hundred and twenty-eight respondents agreed with the statement, while thirty-eight were neutral and thirty-three disagreed with the statement. For the second statement, a hundred and four respondents agree that the current bell schedule allows me to address the differentiated needs of students, while thirty-seven were neutral and fifty disagreed. Finally, the third statement, seventy-five respondents agree the current schedule and extra time at the end of the day provide adequate time for planning and collaboration, while thirty-four were neutral and eighty disagree. Overall, this showed us that our minor tweaks to the bell schedule this year provided some immediate support for teachers. However, there is still a need for more time to support effective planning. The next slide highlights questions asking staff to reflect on a potential block bell schedule. Ninety-four respondents agree the daily blocks for planning will enhance teacher ability to collaboratively plan and design engaging instruction, while forty-five were neutral and fifty-nine disagreed. Fifty-six respondents agree that there will be a need for professional development to teach in a ninety-minute block, with fifty-five responding neutral and seventy-nine disagreeing. We also asked the staff to share their preference on a timeline for making a transition to a new bell schedule. Eighty-four respondents prefer a transition for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and a hundred and sixteen prefer the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So what does this look like in other divisions? We reviewed data related to schedule structures and other divisions in the region. In the chart above, we have included the middle school schedule structure in each of these divisions for you. The focus group identified three overall categories of need, in which we established belief statements with actionable steps to support the work. These were also included in the middle school staff survey and highly supported by survey participants. Priority one relates to the optimal student experience. Priority two relates to efficient teacher structures and priority three recognizes the need for flexible opportunities. Here, you can see the details related to priority one, which is in order for students to be life, college and career-ready, students must have access to an educational experience that includes academic choice, engaging instruction and support to address overall student needs. We will, to the greatest extent possible, build schedules that incorporate intervention and remediation, continue our commitment to smaller class sizes, increase the number of offerings for related arts, provide double blocks to support student needs, and provide single block options for those needing less support.
Priority two speaks to teacher structures. Intentional, adequate and collaborative planning time allows teachers to implement effective and meaningful instruction for students. So what does this mean? We will, to the greatest extent possible, provide quality planning time opportunities within the master schedule, maximize instructional minutes within the master schedule, facilitate ongoing job embedded professional learning that is relevant and applicable, continue choice options within professional learning, minimize the number of teacher preps and consider equity and teacher load. We'll also be mindful of content expertise when assigning courses to all teachers.
Priority three focuses on flexibility within our schedule. Student needs change. Therefore, we must provide flexible schedules and facilitate time for enrichment and remediation. We will, to the greatest extent possible, respond to changing student needs with changes to and flexibility with schedule options. Consider semester-long related arts classes, provide more choice and course offerings, support the SEL needs of our students, provide enrichment and remediation opportunities for students, facilitate extracurricular activities, and facilitate time for student celebrations and MTSS highlights.
Overall, the qualitative and quantitative data collected through our focus group work captured essential input on what we value as an organization and best practice to serve our students. First, our minor adjustments to the bell schedule supported teacher needs this year. Overall, the work of the focus group shows the benefits of adjusting our schedule to the block option. The block schedule supports identified student needs and enhances teacher structures, including a significant daily planning time. The block schedule also provides multiple options for flexibility with students. Intervention enrichment could be supported during the school day. And there's an opportunity to double block ELA and math as needed to support foundational work for students struggling with a specific content area. We also may increase choice with electives for students. And finally, professional learning is essential and will be facilitated for teachers. Moving ahead, our school principals and leadership teams see the value in this option and are committed to putting in the work to make the transition to a block schedule for middle school students. Principals will champion this work along with myself, Jessica Walter, several central office support and teacher representatives. First, we will need to create and provide essential and optional professional learning opportunities to support staff in this transition. And school leaders will also plan to embed this support within faculty meetings and department content meetings. Our content coordinators will lead necessary updates to current curriculum with extra attention on pacing to reflect the needs of a block schedule. And we will continue to seek input from staff as we finalize the details for a middle school block schedule. Our team will continue planning with ongoing input from all stakeholders. Our plan is to transition to a middle school block schedule in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This concludes our presentation and we are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Worley and Ms. Walter. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments for Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I fully support the block schedule at the middle school. I think it does provide more flexibility, more opportunities for students, but it also builds in that really precious planning time for middle school teachers. And I hope we do a study like this in the elementary schools. Planning is absolutely critical. And it doesn't have to be the same one. But the other thing, I guess, I know we've dealt with the block schedule at the high school level for a number of years, is the block schedule that you're envisioning in a middle school, parallel the block schedule that they're going to encounter when they go into high school.
Well, we would take the year to flesh out exactly what it looked like, but the bell blocks would be blocks of time. And there'd be four blocks of time during the day on an AB rotation. But what that looks like for middle school is a little different because of the elective choices they have. And some are on a rotation, you know, where they rotate through different electives to figure out what they want to do. A foreign language class in middle school takes a little more time. So it gives us flexibility to put that in their schedule, but also to build in double blocks for literacy or math as needed. And also to-
I think what's really important is it gives them experience and practice in a block schedule. So when they go on to high school, especially those students who want to strive a bit more and take more courses, it allows them, but they will have had practice doing that. I think that's really important. So I think it's a great idea. Glad to see it.
Ms. Huntley and then Ms. Yon.
Thank you very much for this report. When the survey, when I'm looking at current middle school schedule survey feedback, was there a question on there, like how many years' experience the teachers that were filling out the survey had?
No, I don't believe we put that on there.
Okay, because I'm always curious if it's teachers with more experience, like where they fell. Because we really want to get everybody on board, right? And it may be a years of experience more thing or something than just. So that was just curiosity to me in the survey. How many were new teachers? How many were veteran teachers? And how did they fall within the feedback?
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. And Ms. Yon?
I think my only question is, how does this relate to what we're doing in our high schools?
The blocks of time, it depends on where we land. It's block schedule AB. So some classes will be every day, some classes will be every other day, depending on. There's so much potential here. And that's what the work of the committee was discussing. If a student needed a double block for math, there's potential to do that. Or a double block. And we've looked at a variety of schedules. And so we'll finalize that. But the chunk of time is the same. We just have to work out the bell schedule.
Well, and I understand that. Thank you, Dr. Worley. But I think my question is, what are we doing now in our high schools? We just changed our high school schedule.
Our high schools are on an AB block schedule.
Okay, so that would match up. So-
Yes, ma'am.
So like the transition from middle school to high school would be compatible?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't it be all of a sudden screaming, hey, what's going on here?
It'd be similar for sure, yes.
And there'd be year-round classes?
Yes, ma'am, year-long classes.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Ms. Summle?
From a middle schooler's perspective versus a high school perspective, the students sitting there in a longer class versus two shorter classes, is there any science on whether, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking about the slide that you said that said some teachers have to really prepare differently when they're with students for a long period of time.
Absolutely.
And I don't, I didn't know, like-
That's why we wanted to make sure we took the year to provide professional learning. Teachers are on different levels with this. I mean, I have teachers approaching me in some PD last week, why are we waiting a year? You know, they're all in different places. So we want to make sure that no matter where we are as a teacher, that we are comfortable when we roll this out. And we'll provide some choice in professional learning, some highly, you know, an overview where we want all teachers to have access to some of the same professional learning. But we wanted to make sure we do this well and took time. The principals are willing to champion this with us and they will be a part of leading the support for the teachers over the next year to do that.
Am I to assume that this would probably lead to more project-based learning?
Opportunities for activities, absolutely. And, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about solid instruction, whether it's sixty minutes or eighty minutes. The strategies for a good engaging lesson are the same. We'll just have to work with them on pacing and how you might expect to cover more than one topic in one day. And another day, it may just be one topic. But yes, collaboration, you know, engaging in the work and instruction will be a good part of having, you won't feel like you just took a role and got started and it's time to go.
And then my final, I guess, point would be, from a parent perspective, I always was, you know, we're planning our kids' middle school curriculum with the idea of college. And so at what point do they have to get through these courses in middle school before they're at a point where they're at a higher level, starting out in high school, so that they can, you know, go through and get their extra AP classes and all-
Right.
The planning that goes on from basically seventh, eighth grade, is that impacted at all with the block schedule?
I don't believe so. But I'll let Jessica, Ms. Walter, chime in on that.
The course sequencing is not impacted by this. I would say, if you look at our eighth graders, moving to a block schedule opens up more opportunity because currently those high school level language courses, the level-one courses, take up two elective spaces due to time related in the block. And in a block AB schedule, it would take up one. So it could meet every other day instead of-
Could be the same benefit that a block schedule serves in high school in that for people who want to be on an accelerated path, they could do two maths in a year?
No, we're in year-long classes.
So you're in year-long class. Okay, so, but that's not what we're doing in high school, is it?
Yes, yes.
Oh, but we didn't used to. We switched back.
One eighty-nineteen, right?
Okay, got it.
Dr. Beers?
Getting back to the flexibility, even if you're not going on to college, it provides additional opportunities for students to take courses that they might not otherwise be able to take because of the flexibility. So they might be in a cluster that's going to lead to a certification or licensure, but along the way, they can take things that I think are really important for them to be able to take, whatever it might be. So I see, it's a win-win, I think, for a multiple number of groups of students. And I have to say, I very much love seeing more art teachers in the middle school. I think that's an overlooked and missed opportunity, I think, for students.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. And it sounds like a great direction that you're sending our middle schoolers. And it sounds like it will be with the professional development you're getting ready to roll out with it. Will be widely supported by faculty and staff at the middle school level. So thank you for the information and the discussion from the board, too. Do you have another thought, Ms. Yon?
I just want to add, one thing as an elementary teacher, it would be nice to see our elementary teachers have more planning time also. And I, I mean, they don't, they're not content-based. They teach everything. And they also need planning time. I would like us to think a little bit in terms, I think somebody mentioned, I think Dr. Beers mentioned, maybe looking at our elementary school where we could perhaps provide more planning time for our elementary school teachers. They do an awful lot outside of school. A lot.
Good point. Thank you, Ms. Yon. Thank you. Dr. Worley and Ms. Walter. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven four, updated information on the fiscal year twenty-three state revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to give us a quick update this evening. As you're aware, there was an error made within the budget calculation tool provided by the Virginia Department of Education, which led to a loss of money for this year and for next year. And I wanted to, Ms. Ewing, to give an update to the board and the public regarding that and where we are. So she will take us through this one and the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Good evening again. On January twenty-seventh, school divisions were notified by the Department of Education that there was an error in the budget calculation tool that DOE provided, which impacted projected revenues for both the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. The budget calculation tool that was provided in both June and December by the Virginia Department of Education does not include recognition of the grocery tax hold harmless payment, which began in fiscal year twenty-three as part of the offset in the basic aid formula. This evening, I will review the impact to our fiscal year twenty-three state revenue. In September twenty-two, we amended our fiscal year twenty-three budget to account for additional revenue that we anticipated receiving from the state based on the June twenty-twenty-two budget calculation tool. Our anticipated basic aid funding, which was based on an ADM or average daily membership of eleven thousand eighteen, was approximately twenty-seven point five million. We were not aware at that time that there was an error with the budget calculation tool. Our anticipated basic aid amount is twenty-six point six million, utilizing the December twenty-twenty-two CALP tool and adjusted to account for the error in the CALP tool. This amount is based on our fall ADM of eleven thousand one fifty-nine, as well as higher projected sales tax revenue. The impact of the budget calculation tool error is a decrease in our basic aid funding of approximately nine hundred thirty-six thousand. We have projected our state revenue based on fall ADM. And while we now anticipate that reduction in basic aid, overall, we are expecting an increase in our state funding of approximately one point two million. The shortfall in basic aid is reflected in the standards of quality or SOQ line item in this chart. This increase in state revenue can be attributed to our higher student enrollment compared to our budgeted enrollment, as well as the higher state sales tax projections. Please note that these are still projections based on current information as well as fall ADM. Final state revenue is based on March ADM and can still be impacted by general assembly actions in the coming weeks. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm looking around. Was that Ms. Summle?
It is a bummer.
Elaborate, please. I just put you on the spot. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Ewing? So we're in a state where we're watching and waiting for general assembly action on this item for twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. So I understood you to say, Ms.?
Yes, in my understanding, both the House and the Senate version has language in it to address the shortfall for fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah, I've heard the same as well. But we're not quite sure. And I think me and myself and Dr. Herring, we're discussing twenty-four. And I think that's the next presentation.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we should just skip ahead to twenty-four as we consider our budget discussions leading into March and April?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair, if I may. We would have been in a worse position if we hadn't added three hundred students and that led to more funding. Otherwise, we would have been looking at this real gap in our revenue this year. But we're in a good position because we had additional students.
All right, we'll move on to tie-in, item seven five. Ms. Ewing? Dr. Beers, you got a question? Yes, sir.
I know that this had an impact on school-
Oh, I, I know that this had an impact on school resources. Did it have an impact on the budgets of cities or towns or counties?
No, sir.
No, so did you just, this, this one?
Yes.
All across.
All across Virginia, yep.
But, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Herring?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to bring you an update on the impact of that same miscalculation and error on our discussions about the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Uh, we had, had two significant workshops and now we're bringing you a little bit of information to adjust again, uh, to see where we are this evening. Um, Ms. Yu is going to take us through this and if there's questions along the way, we'll stop at various pieces and then allow you to ask those questions.
Before we get into that, Ms. Hunley?
Yes, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-three school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Dr. Herring.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Thank you again. And so at the budget workshops last month, we shared with you state revenue information based on the governor's budget, as well as expenditure increases that were being considered for the superintendent's proposed budget. I will now review the impact to the CUP tool error um, as it relates to revenue for next fiscal year, as well as go through some expenditure adjustments as compared to what we presented at the budget workshops last month. So in regards to the error with the budget calculation tool, um, what that means for us is that our projected basic aid, which is part of the standards of quality or SOQ on this line item, on this chart, is approximately one point one million less than what we had previously shared. Overall, this means an estimated increase in state revenue of four point six million or seven point four percent, instead of five point seven million or nine point one percent that we had shared at the budget workshops last month. So this chart we shared last month at our budget workshops has been updated to reflect this new state revenue increase amount of four point six million. When you compare this to our expenditure adjustments, which range in amount from fifteen point two million to twenty-one point two million, depending on the salary increase that is provided and the health insurance increase, the total shortfall amounts to approximately ten point five million to sixteen point five million, which would become a request to our funding partners. On the higher end of that range, a sixteen point five million potential request to the localities includes a ten percent salary increase and fifteen percent health insurance increase with WJCC covering the full healthcare increase. Before outlining recommended expenditure adjustments, we wanted to share the outcome of our staff survey. We asked all staff members to select their top budget priority. And of those who responded, just under eighty percent identified salary increase for all staff as their top budget priority.
Can I ask a question? As we get into that survey, what was the purpose of the survey? Why was this rolled out?
The purpose was to ask which staff prioritize increase in salary, cover in, in healthcare, the increase, whether the division or that should be covered, or whether we should add more positions to lower class size. Really trying to figure out if there was a certain amount of money available, where is the first priority? And seventy-one percent of our staff responded, which was a huge participation rate. And just under eighty percent said, we want you to place the emphasis on an increase in salary.
Thank you, Dr. Herring.
So after the conversations at our last budget workshop, it seemed the consensus of the board was to move forward with a proposed eight percent salary increase. So by reducing from a ten percent increase to an eight percent increase, this would decrease our funding request by two point four million. In addition, last month, the information presented assumed a fifteen percent increase in our health insurance rates, with no increase passed on to employees. Based on the survey results, the majority of staff ranked a salary increase for staff as the top priority. And we've also learned that the highest increase we are looking at for health insurance is a fourteen percent increase. So the current recommendation is to share that increase seventy-thirty, with thirty percent being passed on to employees. This would yield a savings of one point two million from what we had previously shared. And in total, these adjustments for the salary increase and health insurance brings our ass down from sixteen point five million to twelve point nine million. Kever will now share what an eight percent increase in the health insurance increase cost share of seventy-thirty may look like for some employee groups.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Before Mr. Kever jumps in?
As long as it's not a question of me.
So that final number you just offered, the twelve point nine million, that includes the error, the CUP tool error?
So this is just looking at expenditure? Oh, I'm sorry, no, yes, it does, it does include the CUP tool, yes. So because the starting point was the revised request of the localities.
It would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, less than.
One point one million less.
Absolutely.
Sorry for that, Mr. Kever, but just wanted to clarify that.
So before Mr. Kever gets started, there was a, a request on the board to try to find a way to, to put all the healthcare scenarios on one slide. So we've attempted to do that, um, and, and Mr. Kever is, is going to present that slide now. And really what we're trying to show is if we went with the eight percent raise that, that the board is focused in on as, as a priority for them, and we were to pass on a percentage of the healthcare, what is the impact on different groups of employees? Good luck, Mr. Kever.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Wonderful introduction. In- instead of plotting all two thousand employees on a bar graph and trying to, to show it in that capacity, what we have attempted to show to you is a best-case scenario and worst-case scenario for four employee groups with an eight percent raise, the seventy-thirty split that we've described to include a fourteen percent increase with health insurance. So just to acquaint you with the chart, in the, in the top left-hand column under teacher step zero, so that's a master's level teacher, step zero. If that employee chose employee-only coverage with the KA five hundred plan, uh, their potential salary increase, uh, is just shy of thirty-eight hundred dollars. So that's what that green bar there recommends. That's their best-case scenario with the raise. Their worst-case scenario, and when I say worst case, I mean, let's, let's be honest, that healthcare is a choice and the plan that you select is a choice. But I'm saying worst case, meaning the most costly scenario for that particular employee would be to take family coverage on the two fifty plan. Uh, his or her salary increase would be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-six hundred and sixty dollars. Just to give you that orientation. Each of our healthcare plans has options for the employee based on single subscriber, dual to include spouse and then family, and the, the costs associated with that vary. So we're trying to give you the best global picture of what it is that occurs. And I think the primary component that at least resonated for us administratively is that red line is the zero line. And that the scenarios that we provided to you this evening, using this cost projection, has everybody above the red line. Hope, hopefully that.
It looks like you've done very well, Mr. Kever. Very excited.
No question.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Mr. Kever, Ms. Yu? Yes?
I'll just a comment. Thank you for doing that. I think you were referring to something that I might have said last time. And I just wanted to say for the record, I did not expect a graph with two thousand employees mapped out. I meant something like this, how do we see, where's, where's the, yeah, where is potentially someone losing money? And, and this is, this is what I was asking for, so thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, we can continue, yeah. Thank you.
So beyond the adjustments to the proposed salary increase and healthcare cost share, the senior leadership team has reviewed the expenditure increases to see where we can make adjustments to lower this potential request to our funding partners. This table shows expenditure adjustments that were previously shared with a proposed revision and the corresponding savings that would result. In the area of personnel requests, we have reviewed the requests and are recommending the following changes. For elementary teacher allocations, instead of an additional seven teachers, we would propose adding five. And for high school, instead of four teachers, we would propose adding one. We have reviewed the current enrollment grade, by grade level, and believe we can manage without a negative impact on our class sizes. For special education, we initially planned to add eight teachers to the operating fund. Five of these are new positions to address our current caseload. And while these positions are still needed, we propose funding them through our American Rescue Plan or ARP grant in fiscal year twenty-four. For the additional four special education aides, we are also proposing to fund those through the ARP grant next year as opposed to the operating fund. It is important to note that these are new positions that are being added to our staff. We are not reducing our current workforce in any way. For other expenditures, we are recommending the following changes. The anticipated cost for the new trailer at Stone House will be funded with the ARP grant. As these are one-time expenditures, they are ideal for use of grant funds. And we've recently prepared a utility projection for the current year. And based on this information, we believe we can reduce the utility increase from five hundred thousand to three hundred thousand next year. The fleet management system that was under procurement process last month is being finalized. And there are one-time costs that we plan to fund out of the current fiscal year. This will reduce this request from one hundred twenty-four thousand to forty-five thousand, which will be the ongoing annual cost for the new system. The cost of the one-time one percent bonus that is included in the governor's budget is estimated to cost us one million. But when we amended our current fiscal year twenty-three budget in September to account for this year's final state budget, we allocated those additional state funds to support the bonus payments that were paid out in the current fiscal year. So we will only need to add six hundred six thousand five hundred to next year's budget to pay out this bonus next year. Lastly, budgeted attrition savings over the past five years has ranged from five hundred thousand up to a one point three million. So we are recommending that we go ahead and change it from five hundred thousand to one million as we are developing the superintendent's proposed budget. All of these adjustments will reduce our expenditure increases by two point two million.
Ms. Hummel has a question?
Yes, so we, we're moving all of these to the ARC, to being paid by the ARP grant, a, 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 a lot of them. What was that money going to be used for without doing this?
In the ARP grant?
Yeah.
Um, we have some money set aside for some retention bonuses that we thought we might need to utilize. And so that's likely where it's going to come from because those funds have been allocated.
We were holding this back.
Correct.
For retention purposes, and now we're like, mm, yeah, okay, now that's gone.
Well, we feel we need to put it into, to people so that special education especially has the staff they need for next year. At knowing that these teachers, if our, the needs of students remain the same and the numbers of, of students being served in special education remain the same, that these will have to come into the operating budget next year.
If I can clarify something, Ms. Hummel said, you said all of these items, is that accurate? All of these items are paid with ARP?
Not all of the items. Um, the special ed positions will be funded through the ARP grant and the one-time costs for the Stone House trailer.
Oh, okay, so I thought it was the teacher allocate, the, I, okay, so.
So for the teacher allocations, instead of adding seven elementary teachers, we're only going to add five?
And those were the teachers to account for the extra three hundred students. But we've looked at every class across the system and we think we can manage with some less than what the numbers would suggest.
Ms. Ordige?
So did I understand correctly that when we see special education aides four to zero, that's just from the operating budget? That there will be four aides paid for through the grant?
Yes, ma'am. So in the budget workshops, we had, um, shared an additional, a need for additional four special education aides. So instead of adding them to the operating fund next year, we'll fund them next year through the ARP grant.
Okay, but we are getting the aides, we are.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, and if you look at the teachers, the amount goes down and that's the four hundred thousand is in the ARP grant as well. So some teachers will be in operating, operating budget, some special ed teachers and some will be in the ARP grant.
Okay, but when we say we're going from seven to five for elementary school, that's, that's really a.
That's a cut.
That's a cut, okay.
Yes.
Well, we'll continue, Ms. Young, thank you.
So in addition to reviewing the expenditure increases, we've also reviewed our revenue. Um, since fiscal year twenty-two, we have budgeted sales tax revenue conservatively at ninety-seven percent of the total presented on the Department of Education's budget calculation tool. Looking at past year trends, we feel we can increase that to ninety-nine percent, which yields an additional three hundred forty thousand in state revenue. In addition, the bus stop arm camera program that began last fiscal year generated approximately one hundred twenty thousand in revenue, which we have not budgeted for. We're recommending that we budget for eighty thousand next fiscal year. Since the goal of this program is to promote safety and not generate revenue, this will continue to be monitored as we move forward. Uh, with these revenue adjustments, our anticipated revenue increase for next year is approximately five point one million. And when you compare this amount to our revised expenditure total of fifteen point four million, which factors in the adjustments we've shared this evening, the potential request for our funding partners is approximately ten point three million. Again, these are the adjustments being considered for the superintendent's proposed budget, which will be presented on February twenty-first. We are continuing to gather data and cost estimates for various items to finalize her budget proposal.
And this would have been nine million if it hadn't been for the error in the CUP tool. So we've gone from fifteen or sixteen to nine million. Fifteen to ten and sixteen to nine, did I go the way right?
Before we go around for comments or questions, if there are any, can I ask about timeline? Usually we see timeline, next steps, um, at the end of the presentation is, we have an idea.
I didn't add that this time, but we'll present the superintendent's budget on February twenty-first. Um, I'm hopeful that we might have budget CUP tools for the House and Senate budget versions. I may be able to share that on the twenty-first as well. Historically, that information has been shared the first meeting in March.
And then after the superintendent presents her recommended budget?
March seventh, there should be a public hearing scheduled, I believe. And then the board would approve the budget on March twenty-first to submit over to the localities by April first.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Yu or Mr. Kever? While we have. Moving in the right direction, and I appreciate all the hard work, the labor that's, uh, the toil that's been made over this, uh, this twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Never liked to see, um, taking sharp cuts like we've had to ask we consider doing. Um, but I do appreciate that as we look at all of these categories, we don't see us dipping into instruction, um, that most valuable area of our budget. So thank you for, for being thoughtful and creative in the things that we can do and things that maybe we can do without, uh, in that next year. So, thank you. You got a thought on your mind, Ms. Young?
I do.
Go for it.
I know that the Senate and the, um, legislature is talking about increasing the five percent to seven percent for our teachers, a seven percent raise. If, if that passes, how would that impact our budget? Would we go back to ten percent raise? Or would we stay at the eight percent and have that reduce the amount that we asked for from our funding partners?
Um, when I present my budget, my proposed budget, it will be based on the numbers. Um, when I present my budget, my proposed budget, it will be based on the numbers you've seen tonight. Um, after that happens and before it goes to the localities, the board will have an opportunity to, to have more information on the House and Senate. I'm not sure if you'll have a final general assembly budget before you send your bu- budget over, so it's going to be hard to make adjustments prior to that, even though we see a 7% on the table with both. Um, with that in mind, of course, it's a million less, and the, the, both the House and the Senate have talked about making the error in the calc tool right for 23, but not for 24. And so there's still a million dollars short, even if we go to 7%. There is, in the Senate budget, there's a, a huge amount of money to deal with the support cap and remove the sport, support cap. If that money comes through in any shape or form, that will also help our budget too. Unfortunately, I've got to present a proposed budget on this, and there's a lot of movement happening, and it's, it's, it's hopeful. It's hopeful for public education, the discussion right now, and we, we hope it stays that way.
I just want to be, don't want to wear orange.
We've been in a not-too-unfamiliar space with not quite knowing, having real confidence in what the General Assembly is going to deliberate on and pass down to us. And then I remember last year, we communicated as such with our funding partners that this is what we can do. If we can't, if for some reason it doesn't pan out the way we believe the General Assembly will decide, we would appreciate that, the support from our funding partners. And we might be in a similar situation, just communicating that with our funding partners and recognizing that they've been fantastic supporters of, uh, public education and that they're going to continue to do their work and understanding that we need help, we need support.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to policies. For some reason, we only have five and not like 20, but.
It's a big night.
Five is good. Uh, we'll move, uh, item 8-1, review revisions to policy GBMA, staff complaints and grievances. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe, uh, Mr. Keever's going to lead us off and do the, the high level on the policies, and Mr. Baker and Ms. Ford are both here to answer detailed questions on the various policies if needed. Mr. Keever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Um, good evening again, board members. The five policies we bring forward this evening, uh, were reviewed by the Policy Committee on Wednesday, January 25th, and I want to start with the two G policies that, that are being discussed. The first of those is currently coded as GBMA. It's a policy talking about, um, professional staff or staff complaints and grievances. Uh, this particular policy, we feel like, uh, needs to be recoded, and, um, part of the rationale for that is that these two policies, back-to-back in the G section, talk about how staff members, depending upon the type of staff member, may access a process that allows them to, uh, grieve a decision relative to employment. So GBMA is the way it's currently coded, and we are recommending that that be changed to GBM. Uh, it aligns with the current V SBA policy, GBM, and when we talk about, uh, this particular policy, we are talking about, uh, licensed teachers. Uh, the, the title of it can sometimes be confusing for folks based on the way it's worded, but in this particular policy, we're talking about licensed teachers. The second of these two policies talks about the support staff and their ability to access a grievance procedure relative to adverse employment outcomes. Uh, in our case, we are recommending, again, a coding change, I'm sorry, yes.
I just want to.
Yep.
Make sure we're all on the same page now, so now Mr. Keever's looking at item 8-2, GDMA?
That's correct, Mr. Dowell, and what I was trying to do is to position, position these two together since we are recommending a recoding that puts them back-to-back. So I'll, I apologize, I'll be glad to answer questions, or Mr. Baker will be glad to answer questions on the first one that I just provided.
I think it was clear, but just to make sure we're moving forward with you.
Yes, sir. So the, the second of the, the two policies then is currently GDMA. Uh, again, we are recommending a, a coding change for that as well as a slight title change. Uh, we have a current regulation which outlines the grievance pieces. In consultation with our attorney, uh, it was advised that we actually move the regulatory language into the policy on this particular one, uh, and then we would have an opportunity to eliminate or retire the corresponding regulation. So let me pause there and see if there are any questions that you may have.
We, we did talk about this in policy, like, okay, typically, typically, we want all of the details and to be in a regulation, and so why in this instance for, um, staff, are we kind of going counterintuitive to that logic? But Mr. Keever explained to us that it was the, what is it, our legal recommendation?
It is, it is the recommendation from our attorney that counsels us on policies to have the specific definitions and requirements of the grievance process in the policy for this grouping of employees to be able to access. We feel like in the recoding and the re-titling, it will make it, uh, clearer to the employee where to find this information as well.
And so, go ahead, Dr. Beers.
Just, um, and we filmed that before with other policies, where we actually pull things, put on regulations, stick it in there, from the very same reason, so it's, it's right there for, for the complaint, the orders that are called, that are seen.
Ms. Young? Look like you have your hand up.
For the support staff, I think one of the things that we had talked about, what I had asked about is, why isn't that language in GBM? But it's because they can go look at the law, because it's pretty well.
Statute's there.
Established in there, and that's for our, um, our teaching staff, but for our support staff, they have it more spelled out, so.
And there are also, along the same lines, there are different rights afforded to different groups of employees based on licensing. So the, the licensed staff has a, a different, um, procedure or grievance process vice the support staff.
And then we also talked about, just, you know, because we were confused, okay, we got two GBMAS, but we're really, we're really renaming the original GBMA to GBM and then having the more detailed version following that nomenclature and creating that one at GDMA.
We, we, correct, the way they would be listed once they become approved and live is they would be back-to-back. Right now, they are separated by other coding and, and lettering categories, and this move would allow the, um, professional staff grievance policy to lead, and then the support staff grievance, um, to follow.
I think it makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
You're welcome.
On to, um, item 8-3, IGCA.
Correct. This is a set of three policies from the instructional realm that we wanted to provide for you this evening. One of the things that we like to do in going through the policy manual is to potentially eliminate policies that might be redundant or could be incorporated. So through the work of curriculum and instruction of Ms. Ford, the first one we want to talk to you about this evening is to review the retirement of IGCA, which is the summer school I'm going to talk to you about where that information gets included, unless you want me to pause and, and opine further on removing the summer school policy.
For my part, just, I mean, if we're retiring it, where, where do we find it?
Some students might contend that we shouldn't have a summer school policy. So if we did a survey, they may say, hey, no, let's, we are going to actually put it into the remediation policy, which is, uh, the remedial instruct, instruction program, IGBE. Uh, this is more closely aligned to the V SBA model, and we felt like there ought to be some specific information about the remediation pieces that we offer over the course of the entire school picture, and therefore include summer school as a part of that. So you'll note in the, the green sheet, as we lovingly refer to it, that explains the very specific changes that occurred within the policy, all of the different line revisions, but in total, we are cleaning up the language around the remedial instructional program. We are adding the summer school component to it and feel like this is a better package policy for us moving forward.
And so we've, uh, transitioned to 8-4.
That is correct, IGBE.
IGBE. Ms. Young?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just resting my head.
See, I just can't, you, you hold your hand like that.
That's how I stare, just in case.
Just in case.
Want to be prepared.
We'll move on to item 8-5 then.
Yes, sir.
IKEE, sir?
IKEE is, uh, being brought forward this evening, and, and we continue to work through a number of our policies that, that might have slipped off the five-year cycle. We, we want to get back on that cycle, which is, I think, why Mr. Dowell jokingly referred to only bringing five forward this evening. We've been working pretty hard administratively to bring you into the Policy Committee to, to address these. This particular policy does outline acceleration and retention of students. Uh, V SBA does not have a policy around retention, it is a part of ours. Uh, with the edits to this particular policy, we also felt like it was important to provide a regulation that really outlines the process. That regulation is provided for you in board docs. In the policy we're bringing forward this evening, we have added the statement to IKEE, which, uh, impowers the superintendent upon your authority of approving the policy to create the necessary regulations or to promulgate the necessary regulations to substantiate the policy.
Ms. Donner, may I ask, was this the, uh, policy that you had noticed, um, inconsistency in pronoun usage?
Hers was in the G's.
It was in the G's, okay.
Which we did correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to confirm that. Any, any questions or comments on IKEE, I believe this is? Okay. Well, I appreciate having access to these policy reviews, uh, that we can all take a look at them, um, at our own speed before the meetings and, um, so, you know, issues with carrying these forward, and I think that we can carry these forward on our consent agenda for our 21st meeting. Number 21st, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you.
Okay. So on to our action items, we do have two this evening, approval of personnel actions. Uh, can I have a motion on item 9-1?
I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personal actions that's presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley, uh, Ms. Oller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. And then, uh, if I can have a motion to approve the 23, 24 school calendar?
Mr. Chair, I want to move that we approve the 23, 24 school calendar and I thank the calendar committee for making that change.
I think we have the actual, can we read what it says under recommended action?
Under recommended action?
Yep.
Oh, I don't even see it.
We scroll up a little bit.
Okay, okay, I see it, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed 23, 24 school calendar that begins on Monday, August 28th, '23, with the school year ending for students on Friday, June 14th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Uh, any discussion on this calendar? We've seen, uh, this and had discussion over three meetings now, and they, they've been really profitable, and I appreciate the community weighing in as well. Appreciate the calendar committee going back to the community and getting that input, and, uh, for being willing and able to pivot to add that full two weeks for the holiday. All right. Ms. Oller will take the role.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. And that brings us to our board member comments. If I can start with Dr. Beers? Are you ready?
Yeah. Um, I, I just want to, uh, commend, um, all the, all the hard work, all the, uh, staff members of, of committees, um, uh, dealing with, uh, middle school scheduling, which I think is, uh, uh, really important, and the whole notion of start time and, um, as well, and really recognize the, the amount of time, um, and deliberation that, uh, that it has, uh, that has, that has taken. Um, I'm very hap, very pleased to see that we will continue to move forward on, um, uh, start schedules, uh, and at some time in the not-too-distant future. I hope to see that, uh, come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
Yes, I also echo, um, Dr. Beers' appreciation for staff. Whenever we're trying to do something new and innovative, it just adds more time to their workload to try to do something innovative, so it's very much appreciative, uh, appreciated, I think, by me and the rest of the board. I want to, uh, say yay for us. None of this could happen without, um, our school board clerk, Beth Oller, who keeps us completely, absolutely, on track for all of the meetings that we have to go to so that we can be appreciated like this with this flimsy piece of paper. But, um, anyway, I also wanted to say, I really appreciated being able to, um, participate virtually with the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference, uh, this past Monday, and, uh, especially getting to, to speak to Senator Mason and Delegate Mullins, uh, about our budget and about the challenges we face and our funding partners face with the state, um, budget, and that was before we even knew about the problem that we had. Um, also the opportunity to hear from the BBSA conference, uh, with different legislative issues and the, the different legal, um, you know, the possible laws that might pass during the crossover, so looking forward to hearing kind of the results of that and just feeling, um, very, very pleased that both Senator Mason and Delegate Mullins are truly, truly engaged because they actually have children in our school system, and that is a, a wonderful thing to know that the people who are representing us also have skin in the game, their kids are in our school system, and they, they want to see, um, see the continued success of WJCC. So just, that was my comment, thank you.
Now, add that Senator Normant, uh, he's got a daughter that teaches.
Senator Normant, who we weren't able to talk to this time, but his daughter's a teacher in our school system, so it's just wonderful.
We did speak with his staffer.
No, okay.
Uh, Ms. Young?
Right, um, well, first of all, I just want to go back to C E T E, that's been a love of mine for a long time, and, um, I'm happy that New Horizons is being able to reach out. I just want more of our students to, to know about the tremendous opportunities for that. Uh, we have a workforce that is in need of those skills of, of masons and plumbers and construction workers and everything else, and, um, I'd love to see more of our students participate in those programs because I think they're some of the most outstanding and even have opportunities for people after hours. They have an after, um, and adult education program, um, that provides those job skills available to other people who want to learn, and I think it's the most amazing program ever. I want to thank the, uh, WJCC School Foundation for the school store, I would have loved that as a teacher, um, just having that opportunity, because I don't know if most people know that, uh, many teachers spend probably over a thousand dollars a year of their own money to provide for activities and materials for their, their classrooms, so, um, and that's hardly ever noted. I'm very grateful for the school calendar, that, that's high on my priority list and make sure that our, uh, staff gets that, that two weeks off. I know as a school teacher myself, that when that's cut short, um, you don't have as much time and opportunity to spend with your family, and that should always be our first priority. Um, I'm thankful, I, I, one of the things I really hope is that, that we have an opportunity to really talk about the resolution and have that taken care of for the school tier start times. The research is, is there. Um, we, we, as a community, may not feel strongly one way or another, it's going to take some adjustment, but our high school students deserve to get some sleep. Having been the parent of seven of those, they are, they, they need their sleep, and they. Having been the parent of seven of those, they are, they need their sleep, and their sleep cycle is different than my elementary students, who I'd wake up, they'd be looking at me. But then my high school students would wake up and be looking at me. So, you know, I really would like to see us not have this discussion four more years from now, I'd like it finished. And lastly, but not least, is Beth. I always feel like her job is to herd cats, and she does an excellent job, and we're very fortunate to have her.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Donner?
I will echo what everyone has said about Beth as the new school board member. She has had a lot of cat herding to do with me, and to help me understand what it is I'm supposed to do, and where I'm supposed to be, and how do I get in the building, and texting and calling, and so I just really appreciate all that you've done. I agree with Mrs. Hummel. It was wonderful to be able to go to the V SBA Capital Conference, and for me, I had an extra day where Dr. Heron graciously spent the entire day with me. There was a new school board member orientation, and so that was really helpful for me to understand policies, regulations, understanding the budget, and so I'm just very thankful for that opportunity. Along the lines with what Ms. Young was saying, there's a Career Connections Fair, and then so there are over 40 different attendees that are going to be with our students on February 16th at War Hill High School to talk about different options in terms of careers, and potentially having, being able to hire students, or at least just talk about that. And so I think that's just so exciting, to open our students to the world of what is, you know, possible for them. And lastly, I will say the highlight, I had a lot of school board work last week, but the highlight of mine was going to the Mathewaleys Got Talent. It was amazing to see these students, and I think as we are adults sitting in a room and talking about policies and things like that, when you get out into the schools and you understand that these teachers are there figuring out how to help the children and support them in whatever talent that is, whether that be singing to a track, dancing, gymnastics, flying a drone, fake axe throwing, comedy shows, magicians, I mean, we had everything. And that was just the first act, the first half. But what was really important is what I felt in that room was this palpable sense of love, and love from all of the teachers and staff that were supporting these students, from the parents and kids that were cheering for everyone's talent, and just the confidence of kids to go up on a stage in front of their peers in a packed standing room auditorium, I don't know if we were over the fire code or not, but to do that in front of all of those people. And so, and the flexibility of, you could also send in a video. And so I think just the ways that we support kids and the way that they want to show up, and to give them that confidence in what we're doing here in these schools. And so it's just so important, and I don't want us to forget, the teachers do more than from, you know, the school bell. They are doing things after hours, being creative, and it's just wonderful, and a wonderful partnership with the PTA who helps support that as well. So I'll end my comments there.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. And Ms. Hundley?
We're definitely in the love profession. Love is in the air. And I know we all love to be appreciated, but also, I thought it was important, I wanted leadership that sit behind us a lot of time, like, if we're the body, they're the backbone, in my opinion, and how much we love and appreciate what they do as well. And it's always comforting when we're at the third meeting and the room is empty, and I can always look to the right and see 10 people that are still engaged in what we're doing. So on behalf of the board, we appreciate everything you all do. And three things. On February 4th, I went to the reservations presentation that the Village Initiative Group did in collaboration with William &amp; Mary. And for those of you that don't know, there's families that lived on a reservation that were dispossessed and moved off so that naval weapons could move in there. And I learned that the Roberts family is why we had the Roberts District. I did not know that. But the Roberts family was there, my husband's family, the Hundley family, they were moved off as well. But that was new information for me. But what I was really excited about was when I went, and Jamestown students were there, and I'm going to give a shout-out to Joseph Irvey and his team, and they had these little, they call them multimedia sway's, and they had talked, did research projects. And so they were explaining it to the people. So that was fascinating to me, because I didn't even know that Jamestown students did that as part of their class. And then also, Jada Turner and Cassie Paul did a senior research project where they interviewed, I know Dr. Heron and myself, and Mr. Townsend, and other teachers about, you know, the state of education, and how we can just continue to get people to come in. But to see those young people, you know, taking real-world experiences and weaving it into their learning was just exciting to me. And I hope to see Lafayette High School in War Hill jump on that wagon, too. And I believe that is it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. And Ms. Ordigo?
I won't, I won't say too much tonight, but I just want to echo my colleagues who mentioned the V SBA Conference in Richmond. It was really valuable, and we've already talked about talking to legislators and understanding the laws that might affect us. So I just want to say, I really appreciated the time that I got to spend with my board colleagues who were able to be there in person. It isn't often that we get to interact in a social way, and to interact as just people and learn things about each other. So I really appreciated that time, and especially getting to know our newest board member a little better. Of course, echo everything said about the professional staff, and not least of which being Ms. Oller, and all I'll say about that is to be continued. And I just want to reiterate a thank you to Dr. Heron and her team for the updates to the budget situation, the updates to the conversation as it is at this point. I know that that is a difficult thing to do. It's not what anyone really wants to do, and it's not, it's not an admission that the initial numbers were not budget of need to begin with, but it is a recognition of the extremely difficult position that a lot of us, that us as leaders and our funding partners are going to be in when we sit across the table. And I do hope that it is accepted and received as the gesture that it is, to show in good faith that we understand that this is really hard, and it also shows that the division is willing to put their money where their mouth is, almost literally, when it comes to the need to compensate teachers. And so that's what we're willing to do for it. So thank you for doing that, and thank you again to Mr. Keever for the chart that I hope wasn't too arduous. It seemed to be of an issue of concern, but it really was, I thought it was really helpful. And it gave me a reassurance, because the last time, while I'm sure all that information was there, and you knew it, I was afraid that what am I not seeing? So thank you. I really, I do appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. I won't speak long. I just want to say, happy School Board Appreciation Month. I was taken aback by that. It actually did surprise me. I wasn't aware. For some reason, I guess maybe I should have been, but it can be a thankless, could be, in some respects, a thankless role that we have to represent our community. But this board, you six, and I'm just honored to be a part of this board, you do it with grace and with dignity, and I think you represent your families extremely well. And so I'm just honored to know you and be a part of this board as a single board member. But I'm also, I think about those board members that we've known, we've had relationships with, and they've gone on to enjoy their families a little bit more than we get to right now, looking at the clock, and my daughters in a game. But I think of them, and I think of their leadership and their, how they've impacted our lives, our maturation as board members, and just grateful for them as well. So for every board member that's ever served on a school board, thank you, and for those that will come, thank you as well for your service. I want to move on to our upcoming events. Point one, we've got the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on February 9th at 6:30, right here in this room, Central Office. And then on the 15th of February, the School Liaison Committee will meet at 8:15 in this room in Central Office, Room 300, I guess I should state. February 15th, the Policy Committee will be meeting at 10:00 in Room 108 of Central Office, and then our school board will meet for our annual retreat in Charlottesville on February 17th at 10:00 a.m. We had previously discussed maybe going down the evening before and having a dinner, and maybe staying over to have a little bit more time, excuse me, sorry about that, a little bit more time together to get to know one another. With all the events that we have agreed to go and be a part of, I think it's just more cost-effective to not do that and just go down for our budget retreat on Friday. It looks like we're going to have a lot of time to learn each other over the next year. Upcoming meetings, closed session followed by the regular meeting on the 21st of February, 6:00 and 6:30 respectively, beginning here in Room 300, and then following up the regular meeting at James Clear Gymnasium. And then on March 7th, we have our closed session at 4:00, followed by public hearing on the Superintendent's Recommended Capital, it says Capital Improvement Plan. It should say the budget.
That should be the budget, yeah.
So it will be a public hearing on the Superintendent's Recommended Budget at 4:30 on the 7th of March, and then our work session and action items on the 7th, all taking place here in Room 300. Okay. So we have our agenda set for regular meeting on February 21st, and with that, this meeting's adjourned.